We're gonna, we're gonna start it back up here. We have a motion by Councilmember Sanchez. Oh, pardon me, I did close it.
Yeah, you did.
I did.
We don't have a second yet. We don't have a second on the motion.
Come on.
We're just trying to help, and we're making it worse.
So, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sanchez and, are there any other comments by any of the councilmembers? I'll second it. And, so, I'm just gonna make a brief comment. I, when I first came on the council, when we closed down a couple of adult businesses, we were down to, I think, like, three massage establishments in the city. And somewhere along the line, they, there have been an awful lot approved. So, I don't see to hold this against the new tenant. I appreciate the fact that the tenants that are adjacent to them are very, very, very well-respected businesses. So, I, those are my comments, and I guess we're ready to go, to vote.
Motion approved, four zero.
Thank you. So, let's go. We'll go to item number 22, Sergio.
I'm gonna read that. Item number 22 is an introduction of an ordinance amending Article 30, Section 3032 of the Oceanside Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, an adoption of a resolution establishing the amended text of Article 30, Section 3032, as part of the implementing documents of the local coastal program to establish revised affordable housing density bonus regulations conforming to the provisions of Government Code, Section 65915, as amended through various Senate and Assembly bills adopted between 2014 and 2018.
This is a public hearing, and with that, I'd ask for disclosures. I've had staff, thank you. Sergio, fire it up.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Feller, members of the City Council. The item before you is a proposed zone amendment and local coastal program amendment to update the city's affordable housing density bonus ordinance for consistency with current state law. By way of background, state density bonus law was enacted in 1976. It's been amended a number of times since its adoption, and its goals are to address affordable housing shortage by encouraging development of low and moderate income units. It's been expanded over the years to recognize the need for housing for households at a wider range of income levels and with specialized needs. State density bonus law incentivizes affordable and specialized housing production by requiring cities to grant densities above and beyond what a particular residential land use category may allow. It also has provisions for the, for incentives, concessions, waivers, and reductions to applicable development standards in return for providing a percentage of a housing project's units for income-restricted tenants for a period of time. Again, state density bonus law requires local governments to adopt local ordinances to implement state density bonus law. The city last updated our local dense, affordable housing density bonus ordinance in 2012. Since that time, there's been a series of legislative updates that have been adopted, a total of nine bills, and the city's affordable housing density bonus is in need of update. Some of the summary of the key legislative changes include the expansion of the affordability term from 30 years to 55 years. It requires affordable unit replacement. It requires local governments to allow a reduction in parking when projects are in close proximity to transit. It includes an option for commercial projects that implement affordable housing, and it expands qualifying categories to include transitional foster youth, disabled veterans, and homeless persons, and it also expands it to include certain qualifying student housing projects. Other amendments include streamlines to density bonus processing and clarification of application requirements, a clarifying language for replacement units, and it requires cities to provide specific information to applicants regarding the requested amount of density bonus and parking ratios, and make a determination whether or not adequate information's been provided. All, the cities, the draft affordable housing density bonus has been updated to incorporate all the requirements required under state law. In addition to those mandatory statute, requirements to be consistent with state law, staff is also proposing amendments to remove redundant language, to include clarifying language regarding discretionary approvals, and, and making sure that housing development is only eligible for one density bonus, and an update to Section 3032M2, which describe, which provides for a quantifiable metric with making a determination on proportionality with respect to square footage of income-restricted units. We recently had a project that came forward with income-restricted units, and they were found to not be proportional. So, in order to remove that subjectivity, we've included a quantifiable metric. So, as proposed, income-restricted unit would have to be at least 75 percent of the average of all market rate units of a particular project to qualify. And finally, we removed some, some language that was a little bit confusing in Section 3032M1 with respect to a vacant unit. The revisions are intended to provide, consisting with state law, it clarifies implementation of state mandated regulations. Even without adopting an updating our local ordinance, the city would still be required to comply with state density bonus law, and failure to adopt an updated ordinance doesn't relieve us from that requirement. It also would bring the city's local affordable housing density bonus ordinance in full compliance with state law. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed ordinance at their April 8 meeting and voted 4-0 to recommend the City Council approve the, the ordinance as drafted with a couple revisions. One was the inclusion of a definition for unobstructed access, and that has to do with proximity and pedestrian access to transit, and it amended the language in 3032M to remove the, the language with the same bedroom count. So, staff has incorporated all the Planning Commission's recommendations into the draft before you tonight. So, with that, the Planning Commission and staff are recommending that the council introduce the ordinance amending Article 30 and adopt the resolution approving the local coastal program amendment as proposed. That concludes my report, and I'll be available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Sergio. We'll go to the public, so I'll open, no, I've already done that.
We have no speaker slips, but this is a public hearing.
No speaker slips, so anybody who is willing to step to the mic to talk about this, it's your time. Seeing none, council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
A quick question for staff in reference to Planning Commission's recommendation to remove your clarifying language that you recommended, the sentence "with the same bedroom count." Can you elaborate a little more on that and, and the reasoning behind that move to, to modify what staff put together, and the impacts that that would cause on future developments or opportunities for development in the city?
Councilmember Rodriguez, the Planning Commission, the staff had included that language as a means to kind of compare apples to apples. So, if the income-restricted unit in a particular project worked as an example to be two bedrooms, and the project had a number of market rate two-bedroom units, it was staff's idea that those, those two-bedroom units should be proportional in respect to square footage with the percentage proposed, 75 percent. The Planning Commission's thought was that they wanted the income-restricted units to be more in, in line with the project's market rate units, so by removing that 75, or I'm sorry, removing that bedroom count, it would require perhaps all the income-restricted units to perhaps be a little bit larger at averaging out all the market rate units in a particular project.
So, I, I agree with staff's language. I think removing this very small, what is it, one, two, three, five words makes a big difference, and it puts more restrictions on the development community, which translates on higher costs all around. And so, my concern is that, you know, this is, we're, we're conforming to the state's requirements with regard to density bonus. We have very competent and talented staff that put language together to clarify this, and I think it's there for a reason. And so, I would like to see us move forward with the original staff's recommendations and include this language so that we're not creating additional burdens and hurdles for the development community when they are trying to, to accommodate the density bonus and, and have affordable units within their project. So, that's my only concern. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve it, but to have the original text to include "with the same bedroom count" within the language of this update.
Thank you. Before I, I make my comments, was that motion to add in "with the same bedroom count" and also leave in the underlined?
Yes, that's correct.
So, both?
Correct, to just do what a staff was originally recommending from the beginning and not add in this additional, by taking that out, it's making it more restrictive for the development community and making it more difficult to bring affordable housing units to our city.
My question is, because right now, the underlined bold is instead of the "with the same bedroom count," so is the motion to include "with the same bedroom count" and to, and to also leave in the underlined, bolded?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I had a question about the 75 percent, at least 75 percent, because my sense of this is that it's probably, would be okay for, say, luxury homes, maybe larger homes, and so 75 percent would, at least 75 percent would not, would not be, you know, make it so much smaller, but it seems to me that especially on the coast, the units are, are already smaller, the market rate units are already smaller, and so if you say at least 75 percent, they, they then are, become really tiny areas. I've heard a couple of people mention that some of the apartments that we have on the coast are much smaller, and that's probably for a number of reasons, especially since it's the highest, highest value land. So, you know, in increasing the number of units, some of those, some of those units are smaller. So, I, I would feel that if we're gonna be allowing higher number of units, that perhaps maybe saying 85 percent, at least 85 percent, so it's just, you know, just a little bit smaller, because we still, we still are talking about low-income, lower-income family, families, and I am worried that saying 75 percent, we're, we're gonna end up with a disproportionate end result for, for those who are, for the affordable units. So, would the maker of the motion change it to 85 percent instead of 75 percent?
Well, I think it kind of does the same thing. I think staff's in-depth research and due diligence and experience have taken into consideration the need for affordable housing and the development community and the costs involved, and I've talked to several families that have moved in to some of these affordable units, and they're just, they feel blessed and they're thankful regardless of the size. And so, I, I think we want to encourage more of these units, so I would just like to see it stay the same with what staff recommends at the 75 percent. We go to 85, now we're building bigger units, there's more cost, there's less affordable units in the end.
What I'm saying is, my, my concern is for the higher-density, smaller units for the market rate, and we start going down to even 25 percent less of that space, we're talking small, yes. People are, especially if you've been homeless, are happy to be in, but in terms of the health and safety of our community and being able to thrive and, and, you know, having the kids be able to thrive, I think that the size of a unit becomes pretty important. For a kid who maybe never had a bedroom before and that now has, you know, I'm not gonna say a closet, but you know, maybe a little bigger than a closet, that's a big deal, but that's not normal for us, is it? I mean, and it shouldn't be normal. I think every, as much as we can afford to do in Oceanside is provide as, as much equity as possible across the board, because when kids grow up in a sub, in a, in a different kind of environment, that's different because of their status, of their income, of, you know, the color of their skin, whatever it be, that is this disproportionate income situation, then, then they have, it affects their ability to, to thrive and to succeed. And so, for me, if it's 85 percent, it's, it's just 10 percent difference.
Really quick, before I concede that, you know, you're the experts here, so what, what's the difference here from 75 to 80 to 85? If you can elaborate how you came to the number of 75, that would be very helpful.
Councilmember Rodriguez, so the proportionality requirement is a local requirement, it's not mandated by state law. It's one of the local controls that we were able to maintain. In researching the topic, we polled cities across the state through the League of California Cities Listserve for housing and community development, and we found that only one city had an adopted, similar adopted proportionality ratio implemented into their ordinance, and it was the city of Santa Cruz, and they had 75 percent. To some extent, it's a little arbitrary, but it's a, it's a starting point, and it takes the subjectivity out of making that determination whether or not the, the income-restricted units are proportional with, to that respect, to the respect of square footage. That's how we came up with it.
Councilmember Sanchez, would you be okay with 80 percent? We meet in the middle?
I mean, certainly better than 75 percent, but I'd really encourage you to, to consider 85 percent. And, and I'm saying this not, not because, I mean, if this was a different time, having smaller units would not even be in the horizon, but that is what is happening now, where we're using, we're really building as many units as possible in one, you know, one lot. Fifteen bedroom, I, I never thought we'd have 15 bedrooms and 15 bathrooms in a duplex, you know? So, when we talk about now even going higher than that as a right, if you, if you decide to do affordable housing, I just don't think, I just don't feel comfortable creating more injustice by saying, okay, you can make it small, you can make it 25 percent smaller, when the units are probably already small. So, that's why I'm asking, I'm suggesting 85 percent, that's still 15 percent smaller, and, you know, more units are built.
So, just to clarify, so we're on the same page, make a motion to move forward with this item, to add back in with the same bedroom count that's in bold, and the compromise I, that we're coming to is at 80, 80 percent. And so, that's my motion, and are you seconding that, Councilmember?
I can't, I can't get you to say 85 percent? It's five more percent. Come on, you can do it.
This is a compromise. Do I hear 80, 85, 85, 90?
Second the motion at 80.
Any other, no other speakers?
Yeah, I, I just want to make one question, more question of staff. So, there is nothing here that is above and beyond what state requires us, other than this language regarding comparable for affordable housing units. Is that correct?
Councilmember Sanchez, that's correct. The proportionality is a local requirement, yes.
The only thing, thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
Okay, this is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council, the city of Oceanside, amending Article 30, Section 3032 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to establish revised affordable housing density bonus regulations conforming to the provisions of Government Code, Section 65915 and 65915.7, with the modification that's been set forth by Councilmember Rodriguez and seconded by Councilmember Cunningham.
Please vote.
Sanchez, no.
Free, please.
Item 23 is the adoption of a resolution amending the general plan by the adoption of an economic development element and an energy and climate action element, including a climate action plan, an adoption of a resolution certifying a final environmental impact report, adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approving a statement of overriding consideration, general plan update, GPEA 1900002.
Open this public hearing with disclosures. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Staff only.
I had staff and about 100 emails, and that's it.
I'm sorry, I meant to count the number of emails, but there were a significant number of emails in support of the climate action plan and, and the economic development element, as well as personal comment, communications from the public.
Staff and members of the public.
Thank you. Russ Cunningham.
Deputy Mayor Feller, Councilmembers, good evening. I'm Russ Cunningham with the city's Planning Division. It's been my pleasure, my privilege to manage this first phase of the city's comprehensive general plan update, which involves the introduction of two new general plan elements addressing economic development and climate action. These two new elements are accompanied by the first iteration of a climate action plan, which has become the standard means by which local jurisdictions in California demonstrate consistency with the state's GHG emissions reduction goals. The EDE and ECAE, I'll use these acronyms, have established important policy direction for the updating of the city's existing general plan elements, including the land use element and the circulation element. Should we be fortunate enough to get your support this evening, we look forward to initiating the next phase of this effort, which would allow us to revisit and amend policies which in some cases are upwards of 40 years old. You've been briefed on these materials, they've been available for quite some time, and just last week, at our council workshop on CCE, there was discussion of the climate action plan. There's been a lot of public dialogue on the project in community workshops and public hearings with the Economic Development Commission and the Planning Commission, both of which voted unanimously to recommend City Council adoption of these materials. Many of those in attendance tonight have participated actively in the public dialogue and thus have a good acquaintance with the materials. So, with that in mind, I'm gonna keep my remarks at the thematic level. There are dozens of EDE and ECAE policies, there are more than 20 emissions reduction strategies in the cap, so I'll leave it to you and those in attendance this evening to point to those goals and policies and strategies that are of greatest interest and, and concern. So, here's the city of Oceanside in terms of existing and planned land use. Yellow is residential, red is commercial and industrial, essentially our employment land, blue is industrial and opens, excuse me, institutional and open space, most of that is open space area, and green, fittingly, is agriculture. This city is essentially built out in the traditional sense, and we've entered a new phase, one characterized by infill and redevelopment within already urbanized areas. This new phase provides a great opportunity to make better use of our finite land resources to increase business activity, promote much-needed housing, expand public facilities, and preserve the open spaces that contribute to our city's character and way of life. These policies are found in both the EDE and the ECAE, as well as in the emission reduction strategies that are outlined in the cap. You'll find that these documents, hopefully you found that these documents embrace and promote this idea of the city accommodating growth in an efficient, equitable, and sustainable manner going forward. And I'm happy to revisit this map to talk about the extent to which our existing land use patterns present both opportunities and constraints when it comes to both economic development and climate action. So, let's look at the EDE. The goals and policies of this element are organized around four themes that emerged in the course of public outreach, technical study, and internal staff dialogue. The first of these, these themes is quality of life. Our stakeholders made it very plain that we do not engage in economic development for the sake of economic development itself. We do so to lift the fortunes of our residents and to improve quality of life. So, the policies in the EDE related to this theme call for enhancing public health and safety, encouraging a wide range of housing options, expanding mobility options, improving access to commercial goods and services, upgrading the visual quality of the city, and providing opportunities for public recreation, social interaction, cultural enrichment, and community building. The second theme is prosperity. This is about expanding our employment base, bringing more jobs to Oceanside, expanding our tax base, attracting high-wage employment, capturing our share of business activity and jobs in emerging sectors like healthcare, biotechnology, clean tech, information and communications technology, otherwise known as ITC, or ICT, excuse me, precision manufacturing, and sports and active lifestyle products and services. These are emerging industries that have a foothold in the region and in the city, and we want to grow those. The more robust our local economy, the more tax revenue available to fund the public services and the public facilities that our residents expect and deserve. The third theme is resilience. A resilient economy promotes economic, environmental, and social sustainability, what is often referred to as the triple bottom line. A resilient economy is one that's built to last, one that can withstand changes in the broader economy, one that can weather extreme events, including those we expect associated with climate change, conserve local resources, bring in revenue from outside the community, and keep that revenue circulating within the community, and cultivating, cultivating an educated, nimble, and healthy workforce. A resilient economy is anchored by a fiscally responsible and fiscally sound local government, one that can monitor and respond proactively to economic trends. And finally, a resilient economy is one that works for everybody and not just for a fortunate few. The fourth and last EDE theme is collaboration. One hard truth is that Oceanside hasn't fared particularly well competing with neighboring cities over the years. What seems to work better for Oceanside is a cooperative approach, working with neighborhood cities to tackle common problems, pursue common goals. This approach is embodied in Innovate 78, which is a partnership between the cities in the 78 corridor that analyzes economic trends in the subregion, it markets the region as a good place to do business, it supports startup enterprises, it promotes workforce development, it fosters relationships between businesses within the corridor that can benefit from one another's products and services and expertise. Innovate 78 describes the economy within the 78 corridor as an ecosystem- Innovate Seventy-eight describes the economy within the seventy-eight corridor as an ecosystem of which each city is an integral part. EDE policies under this theme reflect this notion of the local and regional economies being ecosystems that function best when the parts work together as a whole. Turning to the ECAE and those themes, these themes are less conceptual, they're more straightforward and self-explanatory than those of the EDE, so I'll spend less time discussing them. As you have probably observed, the policies of the ECAE track very closely with the emissions reduction measures of the climate action plan, which I'll summarize in a bit. So the first theme under the ECAE is energy efficiency and renewable energy. This is about reducing our reliance on fossil fuels and other non-renewable resources. So it's about sourcing renewable power, sourcing power locally to the extent feasible, capturing and utilizing energy in waste, heat, and other emissions, promoting energy efficiency retrofitting in our existing building stock, and zero net energy in new development, which will be a state requirement at some point, encouraging the use of building materials and other products with relatively low embodied fossil fuel consumption. The second theme is smart growth and multimodal transportation. This is about using our finite land resources as efficiently as possible, enhancing walkability, making transit a more viable and convenient option for both our residents and our workforce, achieving synergies between land uses like commercial and residential, and rationalizing our parking standards and protocols to promote efficient use of our parking resources and to the extent practical to ensure that the cost of parking is borne by those who use that parking. The third theme is zero waste. You know that this city is a vanguard when it comes to solid waste diversion, so the focus here really is on implementing the city's zero-waste strategic plan, which promotes the four R principle, which is reduce, reuse, recycle, and recover, and I can talk more about those if you're interested. We have a goal of achieving ninety percent waste diversion within our planning horizon of 2035. Water conservation is another area where the city is on the vanguard in this region, so measures here focus mostly on implementing the city's water conservation master plan, which responds to state requirements but also promotes increased water independence in Oceanside. So a key goal under this theme is to meet at least fifty percent of our total water demand with local water harvesting by 2050. The next theme is urban greening, which is really about sequestering atmospheric carbon with our urban forest. So this is about expanding the city's tree canopy, which is currently estimated at about seventeen percent. We'd like to get up to about twenty-five percent at the end of our planning horizon. It's also about increasing permeable surface area, and I'd be happy to talk about all the co-benefits that are associated with urban greening beyond GHG emissions reduction. Local agriculture. The Ag District here in Oceanside provides jobs. It provides local produce. It provides scenic resources and opportunities for agritourism. Agricultural, I don't have to tell you that agricultural is an important part of our heritage, and it's something that sets Oceanside apart from other coastal cities in this region. It's a fairly unique resource. As stated in our Environmental Resources Management Element, the city's agricultural areas help to contain urban sprawl and the extension of expensive infrastructure and public services. So opening up our agricultural areas to develop would very much work against the effort to encourage infill and redevelopment in our already urbanized areas. Thus, we have a number of policies in both elements that promote preservation of the city's agricultural resources. The last theme under the ECAE is sustainable consumption. Local GHG inventories do not typically account for emissions that are associated with our consumer choices, but we, but what we choose to purchase and consume contributes significantly to our carbon footprints, as well as to the solid waste stream. So we have policies under this theme that go beyond the purview of the cap to encourage residents, businesses, to be mindful of the embodied energy and emissions in the products and the packaging that they purchase, though there are no mandates, I will tell you, in this realm. So here's what we were working with. We prepared a GHG emissions inventory, and it demonstrated, as we spoke about last week at the workshop, that almost fifty percent of our emissions come from private vehicle transportation. That's a tough nut to crack. It will be years, if not decades, before we have the right land use patterns to really leverage transit and enhance walkability and other forms of active transportation to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So we have focused a lot on the electricity sector, and again, that's a discussion that we had at the workshop last week. So looking very quickly at the cap measures, the EDE and the ECAE are obviously high-level policy documents. The cap is where the rubber meets the road, essentially. This is where specific measures are established that the city intends to undertake in the short term to support the state's emissions reduction goals. So you'll see that these categories align quite well with the themes of the ECAE, and those two documents are really joined at the hip, those two documents being the ECAE and the cap. So in the sector of energy and buildings, we're looking at promoting energy efficiency in both new and existing development, encouraging the expansion of rooftop solar and other forms of what are called distributed renewable energy generation facilities, heightened awareness and consciousness regarding energy use. The centerpiece of measures in this particular sector, as you know, is the renewable energy procurement goal, which is proposed at seventy-five percent renewable energy in the electric sector by 2030, with the environmental impact report, including an environmentally superior alternative one-hundred percent renewable electrical energy within that same, that, excuse me, within that same timeframe. You will likely hear from a number of constituents tonight who encourage the city to pursue that latter option. In the realm of water and wastewater, I've established that most of our policies and as well our cap measures really focus on implementation of the good work that the city is already doing. So kudos to our water utilities department for being on the vanguard with respect to water conservation and wastewater and reducing emissions associated with the distribution of water and the treatment of wastewater. Same is true with solid waste. I'm happy to talk in more detail about that, but really, most of our measures come right out of our zero-waste strategic plan. Transportation and land use, the focus here is on smart growth policies and standards, particularly in our smart growth opportunity areas, which are designated on the smart growth concept mapped, map prepared by Sandag. We're also looking at transportation demand management requirements for new development and trying to incent existing businesses to look for ways to encourage their employees to get to work by means other than the private automobile, as well as requirements for electric vehicle charging facilities. And finally, in the realm of agriculture and urban forestry, these are mostly, most of the measures in this realm are incentive-based incentives for agricultural conservation easements, zoning standards that facilitate urban agriculture and community gardens, a pilot carbon farming program, I'd be happy to talk about carbon farming if you're interested, an updated street tree ordinance, and an urban forestry plan that would be about getting trees planted in our public spaces. It's important to mention that the cap includes what's called a consistency checklist. This checklist would streamline environmental review for projects that are located in urbanized areas that have certain energy efficiency features, that source a percentage of their power on-site, that have TDM measures. If they can check the boxes, they do not have to engage in expensive and time-consuming GHG emissions analysis as part of their EIRs or their MNDs. So we think that's a strong selling point, essentially, to the development community. So the cap measures generally, they focus on education, incentives, voluntary efforts. There are very few mandates in the cap, and we're going to try to keep it that way as best we can. So this graph demonstrates emissions under different scenarios. The line that trends upward from the dashed blue line is what happens if we do nothing. The blue line, dashed blue line, is essentially where emissions are today based on the 2013 emissions inventory. The green line shows what we achieve through state and federal actions, and then the yellow line is what we achieve through our local measures in the cap. You will see at a certain point, right around our planning horizon, emissions start to trend up. Again, we would be obliged to look for ways to continue to bend that curve downward and get to the state's goal ultimately at 2050 of essentially two metric tons of emissions per capita, per resident. So we prepared an environmental impact report. That environmental impact report found that there are potentially significant and unmitigable impacts related to aesthetic and historic resources, mostly due to solar, rooftop solar installations, window retrofits. These are all things that the state has largely preempted, that we don't have a lot of purview over to begin with, so there's not a lot of control the city has over those kinds of installations to begin with. So I'm going to close with a little personal anecdote. You've probably noticed there's a lot of intersection between the policies of the EDE and the ECAE. One of those points of intersection is on the subject of innovation and the extent to which innovation drives both economic development and climate action. So I'll tell you that in our household, we own an electric vehicle. It's a 2017 Nissan Leaf. We have rooftop solar. These two investments are saving us, we estimate, about thirty-two-hundred dollars a year in energy costs. In less than three years, we've already seen a positive return on investment on the solar panels. That said, it is hard to not feel a little bit ambivalent when you learn that this vehicle right here, the 2019 edition of our vehicle, gets twice the range on a full charge. It has a more powerful and responsive engine. It includes more creature comforts and more bells and whistles. It looks a lot less like an electric car than the vehicle that I have, which kind of announces electric car, and it costs the same as what we paid two years ago. So that's a little tough to take. You know, it's like, gosh, if we'd only waited two more years. However, we take some solace in this. We recognize that innovation is driven by demand, and that our purchase two years ago, multiplied by more than two million other EV purchases worldwide, has helped to spur innovation that makes clean and green products more appealing and functional and cost-effective. So of course, this dynamic exists with other products, computers, cell phones, mousetraps, everything in between, and a competitive, free-market economy, innovation and demand are essentially two sides of the same coin. So to the extent that we can, through our cap or by other means, grow demand for clean and green products, we will be doing our significant part to reduce emissions at the local level. So with that, staff's recommendation is as follows. With goals and policies that promote a sustainable future for the city, the EDE and ECAE provide key policy direction for updates of the city's existing general plan elements. With GHG emissions forecasts and specific emissions reduction measures, the climate action plan demonstrates that the city can continue to grow our local economy, provide its fair share of new housing, while at the same time reducing its carbon footprint. So for these reasons, staff recommends city council adoption of these documents, certification of the EIR, and the adoption of the MMRP, findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. And so with that, I'll make myself available for your questions.
Thank you, Russ. Do you have a side job at Nissan?
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Do you have a side job at Nissan?
I was going to mention that I wasn't shilling for Nissan. I do encourage you to shop for your first electric or next electric vehicle.
I hope it comes in the size of a Crown Victoria, though. If I could learn how to operate that. So do you have?
We have fifteen speakers on this item.
Thirty seconds each. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
As I call your name, please make your way down to the podium. Our first speaker is Reverend Dr. David Q. Hall, to be followed by Cindy Davenport, to be followed by Roger Dan- Davenport.
Deputy Mayor, fellow, and esteemed councilmembers and citizens of Oceanside, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you, and I will make every attempt to be brief. I appreciated the introduction. I am here as a resident of Oceanside, a member of the Sierra Club, the leader of the Pilgrim United Church of Christ Environmental Justice Team, and I appreciate the Oceanside SEAL, City of Oceanside, being put back on the big screen. I'd like to call your attention to the upper right-hand quadrant of the shield. It features the iconic California Grizzly. Sad to say, the California Grizzly has not been seen in the wild in California since 1924. It was a victim of what today we call anthropocentric extinction. We killed them. People in this room tonight may well be aware of the fact that the United Nations Special Committee issued its report just recently, a three-year study involving hundreds of scientists in fifty nations around the world, and their consensus is overwhelming. It's no longer a matter of, do I believe in climate change? Do I deny climate change? The facts are there, ladies and gentlemen. We are endangering the planet that we live on, and there is no Planet B. They estimate a very real possibility of a million extinctions coming up. So the point that I would like to make is that I support the spirit of the climate action plan and glad for the things that Oceanside is doing. I'd like to argue that we need to do more. I'd like to see a hundred percent reliance upon renewable energy, non-carbon emissions, in every way that we can do it. Frankly, again, the consensus is overwhelming. It's going to take every individual, every level of government, every nation on earth to collaborate, to overcome this crisis, and I commend you for considering it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cindy Danvinport, to be followed by Roger Danvinport, to be followed by Diane Nygaard.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers and staff. My name's Cindy Davenport, and I live at 541 Crouch Street, and I am a volunteer with the Sierra Club's My Generation Campaign, the Oceanside team, and we have been talking with Oceanside residents for a while now about one-hundred percent renewable energy and community choice energy, and we've met with pretty overwhelming support. And as a matter of fact, hundreds have signed letters of port, letters of support, as well as little cards like this. And in fact, we're going to be presenting them to you councilmembers this evening. And these cards, a lot of them have comments on them, and they're short and sweet, and you could call them words of wisdom even. So I was going to read a few of them for you. They're just really short, but, you know, that's all you need, short and sweet. So for example, starting with "Go Green." I live in Oceanside 92056, and I support clean energy. I support community choice energy now. I support CCE, and I'm a United I support CCE, and I'm a United States Marine. My kids support clean energy. Continue the research and make this work, please. I live in Carlsbad, but I would like Oceanside to participate also. Please consider this." Heart. Choice. Community choice energy is a choice. Own a house in Oceanside. Please look forward with vision and enact this. I support clean energy. The future of our planet starts with all of us. We must act now and do all we can. We are for clean, lower-cost energy. Let's do what's best for Oceanside. We would love to see you consider this energy. I live in Oceanside and wholeheartedly support community choice energy's purpose and goal. We care. We think this would benefit us. We think this would benefit our city and our families. Adopt a clean action plan. Go green. I support lower rates and independence for residents. I support making America green again. Please vote yes on CCE. I support clean energy for Oceanside. What could be more important? Get on the bandwagon. Giving communities a choice is the only way supply and demand can affect the power supply. We must think long-term. Fossil fuels are finite, solar, wind are sustainable, and best options long-term. The time is now to make this shift. Future generations are going to hold you responsible. Go green."
Thank you. Please. Through all the speakers, so have some decorum, please. Would you call the names so that there's at least one or two at each podium?
Roger Davenport, to be followed by Diane Nygaard, to be followed by Leonard Grossberg, to be followed by Ellen Bartlett.
Welcome. Yes, good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. I'm the one that Russ was warning you against, about. I'm with the Sierra Club My Gen Campaign here in Oceanside. I'm one of the volunteer co-chairs. As you know, the Economic Development Commission and the Planning Commission both voted unanimously to support adoption of these general plan elements. And in addition, the Planning Commission also further recommended the environmentally superior 100% renewable goal and having a citizen stakeholder group that would allow citizens to review the progress of the cap and to make feedback, provide feedback and input. Also, we recommend, they recommended strong consideration of social equity, which is a very important thing in the Sierra Club also, to benefit vulnerable and less privileged populations when you're doing environmental actions. So our position is that we agree wholeheartedly. We think the 100% commitment is really needed because after 2030, when our line starts diverging from the goals, we still have to cut our emissions in half by the 2050 deadline of the state requirements. And if you look around, every other cap that's been adopted in the past several years in the San Diego area has had 100% renewable goals, things like the San Diego City Cap and so forth. And regarding the citizen committees, there are several examples we could point to of citizen committees which are helping the cities to look at what their cap is doing, look at what they're doing for the environment. One of our other strong recommendations is to look at community choice energy, which has become a proven tool for progressing quickly to higher renewable energy content while saving money and providing funding and support which can help with our greenhouse gas goals and our cap goals. And as my wife said, we've been promoting community choice energy, and it has very strong community support. Businesses love it because they get stable rates and they save money. And all consumers in the city would get lower rates, and so they'd all benefit. Last slide, in summary. We do support adoption of the plan elements here and the strong, defensible, and aggressive Climate Action Plan. We do recommend and hope, urge the city to implement CCE as soon as possible. And we also support electrification as a way of promoting reductions in greenhouse gases for the cap. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. Tonight's really the start of Oceanside updating our general plan. These first two sections, economic development and energy and climate action, will help ensure Oceanside has a bright future, improving both our economy and our environment. Imagine a future Oceanside that's both healthier and wealthier. In the last two weeks, the City of Chicago and the State of Washington both signed on to 100% clean energy goals. There are now 135 cities, states, and districts in this country that are 100, gonna be 100% clean, and it was recommended unanimously by our own Planning Commission. Oceanside's been a leader in waste reduction, starting with setting a goal for zero waste. We've been a leader in water independence, starting with setting a goal. So we urge you to put Oceanside on that same path, be a leader on clean energy, and establish that goal of 100%. That lets us all start getting the associated benefits in our city, starting tonight. We also request that you include a stakeholder group to help implement the cap. There are many ways it could be done, from a separate climate or sustainability commission, standing committee, the Planning Commission, even an advisory committee working with staff. Bringing everyone into the tent, businesses, residents, the city, it helps us leverage the staff time and resources with lots more volunteer time and expertise from the entire community. Working together, we can do more, we can do it faster, and we can do it with less cost to the city. Community wants to help with this. All we are asking is you to create the mechanism for that to be possible. So please, we urge you to vote yes on the package, including 100% clean energy goal, a stakeholder group, and working together, we can achieve that healthier, wealthier future for Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Grossberg, to be followed by Ellen Bartlett, to be followed by Matthew Vazilakis.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Leonard Grossberg. I've been a Oceanside resident since 2004. The Climate Action Plan that we have before us has many excellent policies in action. We feel it can be better. Some of the priorities, we've submitted all these in writing to you, so we'd like to, I'd like to do a quick review, is obviously 100% renewable energy. Although the 75% goal in the President Climate Action Plan is laudable, it's not enough. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that renewable does not include nuclear. That's not one of our goals. Next one would be the community choice energy implementation. Although the Climate Action Plan talks about it, it has no indication that it's going to pursue it. The community choice energy technical study is very clear that CCE is feasible. We see this CCE as an excellent, and some say necessary, tool to accomplish 100% renewable and provide a funding source for that and other incentives to reduce greenhouse gases. Also, CCE promises lower rates for electricity and more local control of our energy costs. Next would be building electrification. This refers to discouraging natural gas use in new buildings and encouraging conversion of existing gas appliances to electric. Natural gas use results in about 17% of Oceanside's greenhouse gas emissions, and conversion to all electric homes and businesses can result in a large greenhouse gas reduction. Electrification also provides benefits like reducing building costs, no gas lines, safer homes, no gas leaks, and cleaner air, no exhaust emissions. A couple of other priority items would be the climate mitigation actions within the city limits, and we think that the city should not allow any off-site mitigations of greenhouse gas emissions to be outside of the city limits. By definition, reducing greenhouse gas emissions outside of Oceanside does not reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Oceanside. We'd like to see the, extend the planning horizons to 2050. The earlier we plan for the start acting to these, meeting these reductions, the easier and less costly it'll be. And in addition, public transportation. I think that the Climate Action Plan is weak in its emphasis on creating the use of mass transit to get people out of cars. Since transportation accounts for 48% of our greenhouse gas emissions, this area needs strong action. And then a couple of other items. Citizen Stakeholders Group. It's important, we feel that this is necessary for oversight and monitoring of the Climate Action Plan. And finally, city action. The city should be committed to lower the greenhouse gas reduction actions, and this can include things committed in the lead program in city facilities, such as city vehicles, electrification of their fleet, and incentives. And finally, no idle ordinance. That's something the city council can do immediately and have immediate impact on greenhouse gases. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Ellen Bartlett. I live on 2362 Short Hill Drive in Oceanside. I was trying to decide what to wear tonight, and I felt, because I'm coming as an advocate for all the young people in Oceanside, that I wanted to make sure and wear my Pirate sweatshirt. It's over 25 years old now. But I just want to make sure you all see that. Go Pirates, right? Once a pirate, always a pirate. And as a retired teacher at Oceanside High School for many years, I feel that I need to come here and advocate for our future generations because climate change is such an important issue. The paradigm is shifting now, and I expect that we all need to be brave. It's no longer, the paradigm that was here before is no longer viable, and we need to look for a new pathway. And I think that the city council needs to embrace this. Can I put this? Can we see it all? Maybe not. There we go. Okay, this is, this was done by the California Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessment, and I will email this to all the council members so you can see it. I know it'll be too late after the, you're gonna be voting for this anyways, but it shows all of the climate changes that are occurring in California as a result of our climate crisis. And there is a climate crisis. I'm a scientist, as well as a retired teacher, and I want to put the second. There are, this shows 80 national academies of science all over the world that have reached a consensus that climate change is happening now, and so I, we need to work to mitigate Oceanside can be a leader and embrace 100% renewable energy. Transportation is the number one, as several other people have mentioned, the number one greenhouse gas emission. And so we need to work towards more public transportation, more access to electric vehicles, and also transportation for people that choose not to, not to drive. We are embarking on something historic tonight. This is our first cap ever. And so we need to make it count, and we need to make it count for all of our future generations. And so I'm begging all of you to reach toward the highest that we can, 100% renewable energy. And I love what Russ said. He said innovation is driven by demand, and we need to work towards innovation, and it will be healthy for our businesses and our community. So please, vote for 100% renewable energy in our cap. Thank you.
Next speaker is Matthew Vazilakis. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name. To be followed by Barbara Collins, to be followed by Jason Anderson, to be followed by Joan Bachman. Please make your way down to the podium.
Good evening, Council and city staff. My name is Matthew Vazilakis from Climate Action Campaign. We are here tonight to ensure that Oceanside's cap maximizes emissions reductions in line with state and state targets and protects public health and safety. First, we urge you to adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation to amend the draft cap to include a 100% clean energy target by 2030 and commit to pursuing community choice energy, CCE. Achieving 100% clean energy is the single most powerful strategy a city can adopt to reduce GHG emissions, and community choice is the only viable pathway to reach that target. Setting that 100% clean energy target now is now the norm across the region. Six cities have already committed to 100%, and Santee and Imperial Beach are set to adopt the same targets in the coming months. Further, the EIR identifies that the 100% energy alternative is feasible and environmentally superior alternative. We also urge Oceanside to continue participating in ongoing conversations to create a regional CCE program under a joint powers authority to protect the city's finances, maximize efficiency in economies of scale, and foster regional unity in the face of the climate crisis. Further, Oceanside's cap planning horizon should extend until 2045, and the target for that year should align with Executive Order B5518 to achieve carbon neutrality by 2045. We must plan for and fully execute a total transition away from fossil fuels. To achieve that transition, cities need to establish the roadmap to begin deep decarbonization today. Additionally, the proposed cap leaves strategies for GHG reduction and equitable implementation on the table, including mode-share targets for biking, walking, and transit, setting a zero-waste target, electrifying buildings to reduce reliance on natural gas, and setting green, urban, tree, canopy targets. Additionally, defining strategies to ensure that the communities who are most vulnerable to the climate crisis and have done the least to contribute to it are first to benefit from implementation. We don't have time to lose as the climate crisis bears down on us. We urge you to direct staff to incorporate these recommendations to deliver economic opportunity, improve safety and health benefits, and stave off the worst effects of climate change. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this critically important document.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor and council members, my name is Barbara Collins. I'm a 20-year Oceanside resident. And I first want to thank the city staff for the many hours and all of the hard work that they have put into the cap. And I want to thank you too, the city council members. You've met with many of us over the past couple of months, and you've listened to our concerns, and you've given us your feedback. As a matter of fact, Mayor Weiss was the person who recommended to us that the citizen stakeholder group could be a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. So what we found was that in these, in the course of our meetings, is that we agree on much more than we disagree on. Now, on the 100% clean energy, the Environmental Impact Report did an analysis and found that it was feasible and that it is the environmentally superior option. This is, this is simply the state mandate that covers this sort of a situation where a program has done an analysis and found something that is the environmentally superior option. Okay, thank you. What it says is that if it is feasible and if it is the superior option, that it should be adopted. So that was the finding in the Environmental Impact Report. Thank you. So we, we're promoting this for that reason, and we're telling you that, and that is why the Planning Commission recommended that it be added to the cap. Also, we know that it's off-the-shelf technology. This stuff is readily available. It's here right now. Solar panels are cheap and getting cheaper. The cost per kilowatt hour of solar is less than gas, okay? It's less than coal, but it's also less than gas. That's why Forbes Magazine had a headline recently, "Want the cheapest energy? Then build solar and wind farms." That's Forbes Magazine. Back in our school days, we all remember hearing about the courses that were easy to get an A in. Whoever took one of those easy A classes and said, "My goal is to get a C in this class." Nobody. I urge you to adopt 100% clean energy. Thank you very much. Go for the easy A.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jason Anderson. I'm president and CEO of Clean Tech San Diego, and I'm here on behalf of I'm president and CEO of Clean Tech San Diego, and I'm here on behalf of Clean Tech San Diego to express my support for Oceanside's energy and climate action element and its climate action plan. Clean Tech San Diego was founded 12 years ago to position the greater San Diego region as a globally recognized leader in the innovation and adoption of clean technologies and sustainable business practices that benefit the economy and the environment. Since our founding, the clean tech sector in our county has grown to support over 45,000 employees and has an $8 billion impact on our regional economy. Today, as you know, 45% of our energy comes from renewable sources, and because of actions you may take here today, that will increase. We are home to the world's largest lithium-ion battery storage facility in the world. We continue to be a leader in the nation for rooftop solar installations, and we have over 32,000 electric vehicles on our road. And thanks to the work you're doing here, those numbers will only increase. I want to commend you specifically for including strategies in your cap that increase renewable energy goals, streamline the permitting process for solar installations, promote low-income financing options, and promote energy disclosure and benchmarking, and encourage EV adoption. Thank you for your leadership and commitment to these issues. Oceanside's and our region's economy, environment, and quality of life will be better because of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joan Bachmann, Alberta Street here in downtown Oceanside. First, I want to give kudos to Russ Cunningham here. He has produced one of the best documents I've ever seen out of this city. This Quick Reference Guide, I know he heard me say this at Planning Commission, so. The Quick Reference Guide is very clear, has the very clear goals, strategies, and all of that, and I would think it'd be great to adopt that for other projects that we are doing. I very much want you to take this in its entirety. This is a great document. We have the best bones. You hear that a lot about Oceanside. We have great bones. We do, but we do a lot of things that destroy those bones, and this will build on that. We're already diverting our waste. We're already reusing our water. We're doing everything we can, and we need to do that. As far as is there a climate question or not, there's really only one answer for that. There is one. Scientists have a healthy respect for what they don't know, and they will always say, "I don't know," because we thought the atom was the smallest, then we found the quark, and so on. We thought the planets were pretty far out there, and then we found stars and quasars and things like that. So scientists will always do that. I come from a very scientific family. I'll only say this for the two council members who don't know me that well. I've raised three boys here in Oceanside. We have a wildcat and a pirate in our family, so it's all family in Oceanside. I'm a mechanical engineer. I worked for Hillary Packard for 20 years. I worked for NASA, so I'm officially a rocket scientist. I mentor the kids at St. Mary's for a science fair, and I mentored Russ's son, Boden, there. I also judged down in Balboa Park for that. My youngest son is about to graduate from MIT. So we understand science. We understand the scientific method. We know what that means. And the scientists worldwide have agreed that we have a problem. So you need to be listening to that, and we need to be implementing this. So we need to grow gracefully, and I've explained that with housing in certain ways. We have some great ideas with that to get this transit-oriented development happening. This thing is giving us all the tools we need to embrace the great bones of our city, apply the scientific method, and do the right things. So please vote yes on this project.
Our next speakers are Mike Bullock, to be followed by Tom Lichterman, to be followed by Larry Balma, to be followed by John Bodorf.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm Mike Bullock, 1800 Bayberry Drive. I'm a retired satellite systems engineer. To stabilize the climate at a livable level, humanity must drastically reduce greenhouse gas emissions, GHG, in just 12 years. Since cars are the largest emitter of GHG, we must focus on the city's responsibility regarding cars, which is to reduce vehicle miles traveled. The best way is to give people more choice over how they pay for parking. Reducing employees' wages to make them think parking is free is no longer acceptable. Please approve your planning department's work with the following change. In the Transportation Demand Management, TDM, Measure TL5, please add these two sentences. Prepare and circulate a request for proposal, RFP, to have a third-party vendor design, install, and operate a dividend account car parking system in the Civic Center garage for the financial gain of Oceanside employees that work in the downtown location. When it has been shown to be successful, add it to the city checklist of measures and offer it to other companies. Outcomes are as follows. The contract will protect the city from all liability. The employees that drive every day will lose no money because there will be an add-in amount provided to them sized so that earnings plus add-in will be equal to the charge. All employees will be paid earnings, which will be proportional to the time they spend at work. Revenue from the non-employees will fund the add-in amount and the operational cost. The vendor will actively work to encourage the employees to earn extra money, up to $170 per month, by using alternative modes. The vendor will actively work to get the general public to participate by having a phone app to locate parking and by working with user groups and downtown businesses to promote the convenience, low cost, safety, and ease of using the system all over the downtown and beach area. Please also adopt the Planning Commission's recommendations, including the environmentally superior alternative, 100% renewable energy by 2030, social equity considerations for the energy and climate action element, and a stakeholders' working group. Thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Feller and council members. I'm Tom Lichterman. I reside on Boulder Creek Road in Oceanside. I'm speaking to you here today as the chairman of the Oceanside Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We are a local citizens advisory committee that helps the city with bicycling and pedestrian matters. We have 75 Oceanside residents on our committee, so do represent a significant slice of the community. The committee has discussed the Climate Action Plan at length and has voted to strongly support the city's adoption of the Energy and Climate Action Plan and Climate Action, excuse me, Climate Action Element and Climate Action Plan as recommended unanimously by your Planning Commission. The city's Climate Action Plan is of direct interest to our committee because every mile cycled or walked is potentially a mile less traveled in a motor vehicle, thus reducing vehicle-related emissions, which as we've seen is half of the entire GHG production in this area, and benefiting our environment. But to be effective as alternative modes, we need to, to address climate change, the city needs to invest in active transportation infrastructure, as called for in some of the strategies in the plan. In addition, adoption of this plan is essential in order for Oceanside to be eligible to receive SandEG Active Transportation Funding, which will help provide the funding for that infrastructure investment. In March, we sent a letter of support to the city staff where the committee identified several additional recommended strategies to further strengthen the Climate Action Plan as it existed at that time, including implementing complete streets policies that support all transportation modes, including cycling and walking, working with SandEG to complete the Coastal Rail Trail and the Inland Rail Trail so that we have some real viable infrastructure that is safe to use, adopting objectives to make cycling and walking safer on our existing major thoroughfares such as Oceanside Boulevard and Vista Way, pursuing transportation demand management strategies that provide more first-mile, last-mile options at the transit center. You have a tremendous option right here, a few blocks away. People need a way to finish that trip. Encouraging employers to participate in SandEG's iCommute ride-sharing program. And finally, setting an example for the community by establishing a transportation demand management plan for the city, for city employees, that encourages use of alternative transportation modes. This could be through a dividend account parking system, such as Mike just described, or any number of other incentive programs. We're pleased that several of our recommendations made their way into the final cap that's before you today, and in conclusion, the committee applauds the city for taking this first major step in addressing climate change and strongly recommends your yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Larry Balma, to be followed by John Bodorf, to be followed by Suzanne Hume.
Larry Balma, president of Southmore Hills Association. We were involved early on, asked to bring some stakeholders from Southmore Hills. Our agricultural area is a huge portion of the city here. We put together some large commercial farmers along with smaller farmers, gentlemen farmers, if you will, and we met, we met with planning and with the consultants that they had hired and answered questions, you know, pertaining to our business on the economic side and on the, on the planning side. Anyways, from there, we kept ourselves available for the collaboration here as individuals, and I attended several community outreach meetings, and other people in the neighborhood pitched in and contributed on that. The, as a businessman, I realize how much work it is to put together a plan like this, especially when you're dealing with so many people and getting all the input you can on it, and I just commend the staff for the job that they've done, and we support, we support this 100%. Thank you very much.
I'm a resident of Oceanside for over 15 years, and I'm also with Clean Earth for Kids that my wife and I formed. We want to encourage you to vote yes for the Climate Action Plan, to move forward with 100% clean renewable energy, to plant more trees, and do everything you can to reduce transportation emissions by going with no idling. 48% of Oceanside greenhouse gases come from transportation, and getting rid of idling in Oceanside by Oceanside residents would cut almost 100,000 metric tons of CO2, which would account for 10% of the target reduction. But getting rid of fossil fuels, reducing that and idling, you know, is certainly a greenhouse gas part of it, there's also a health part of it, and that's, you get into the pollution itself. So this is a picture from Salt Lake City, taken one month apart, particulate matter 2.5 micron at the level of 7 versus 100, and it's pretty easy to visually see the difference in air pollution and when we burn anything, what it goes in the air. We've all lived here through enough fires to know what happens to the air quality and all the stuff that's in the air, and it doesn't take much to realize that anything we can do to reduce what's in the air is hugely important. And, you know, we think that, you know, we have great air in San Diego. San Diego is the sixth most smoggiest city in the United States. Idling is a big part of that. It puts dangerous toxic chemicals in the air and contributes a lot to asthma. Asthma is the most common breathing problem in children in the United States and causes the most school absences. Four million children around the world develop asthma because of polluted air. There's a direct correlation between the pollution that comes out of cars and traffic and children's health. As you can see right there, the U.S. is, I think, what, fifth in the world, which is not, not very good. In the United States, vehicle idling contributes enough CO2 as a two-and-a-half coal-fired power plants. So again, getting rid of idling helps the planet and helps children's health. So please do everything we can to help children get clean air. Please move forward with Climate Action Plan, 100% renewable energy, and no idling. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Hume. I'm a teacher, and John and I founded CleanEarthForKids.org. We live here in Oceanside, and we just want to say thank you to everyone that's here tonight, the passionate speakers, scientists, and the excellent work of Russ Cunningham and the staff. The documents presented before you are excellent. We are asking for a 100% renewable energy goal. Here are six projects that we're actively working on. We have 25. So of course, setting 100% renewable energy is important for our children and their future. We're very excited about new trees being planted every year in Oceanside as a part of the Climate Action Plan. We're also doing no idling. We're working with Oceanside School. We're also Good District, local businesses, Vista, Carlsbad, and several other cities here and across the nation. We're real excited about this. We have a lot of support. So we're real excited about getting a no-idling resolution as Vista School District tomorrow night hopefully will vote for, and that includes signs and education. Businesses have shown interest in participating and paying for some of the signs. We're going for STEM grants and working also with local artists to make sure that kids have activities and opportunities to participate and be part of the change. When you visit our website, you'll see that the kids have developed lots of the technology, the slides, et cetera, and they should. It's their future, so we need to make decisions today that will positively impact that future. And the smartest thing that we can do is pass the CCE, because that's really easy, as Barbara said, an easy thing to do. And we know that so many other cities are going with this because it's just a great idea. Anyway, so much to say, and I look forward to seeing you all soon and working with you. Have a great day.
We have no more speaker slips, but we did get several postcards during the speakers, and these will be entered into the record.
Could you go ahead and read each one?
Could you count them? Did you count them?
So do we have any other people that wish to speak? Come on down.
Hi, my name is Mark Bartlett. I'm Ellen's husband. I live at 2362 Short Hill Drive. Good evening, members. Good evening, Deputy Mayor. I'm, I don't have anything written. I can remember in the '50s going from an apartment close to Dodger Stadium down to downtown Los Angeles on a trolley with my mom and my sister. It was great. We could see everything, the trees and the blue skies, and they were blue then. It's changed. The trolleys disappeared for some reason. I ride, for 20 years, I rode bus and train. On the bus, I would see young mothers get on with their children, sometimes two or three children, and they would be going to go shopping. I'd see young mothers taking their children to the doctor's office, and it was an interesting experience. I've seen older people, people with disabilities come on. Fortunately, the bus has access to provide for people in wheelchairs, so that was great. I think that if there was a more, if there could be a study for route, for routes in the Oceanside area, I understand they were going to pull routes, diminish routes, and I don't know how they can really look at the population that is in Oceanside and decide to do that. I think if there were more routes, more buses, and especially if there are electric buses coming out, that that would make a big difference for the Oceanside population with the working class people that we do have here, the people that use public transportation, especially the young ones from Camp Pendleton, who use the buses quite a bit. the young ones from Camp Pendleton, who use the buses quite a bit. The train is another thing, the sprint to Escondido. It stops at major areas in San Marcos, in Vista. It stops at Palomar College, San Marco, San Marcos State University. If there could be more light rails taken into consideration. I understand this costs a lot of money. We've only got 12 years to do this before we go into our sixth extinction, which includes us. We'll be saying goodbye to all of this, so please consider this. This is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more? You already had your turn, sir. No. Just wanted, let me close the hearing. I just wanted to say, do you have, like, plenty of discussion over dinner with your wife over this stuff? It was like you were breathing it, so I was, you must have had plenty of rehearsals, so... All right, I'm going to start with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. 10 minutes and counting. First, I would really just want, I really want to say thank you to city staff, especially Mr. Cunningham. You guys have just worked, worked your butts off the last several years in putting this together and digging in depth. I read several letters written by constituents and Mr. Cunningham's responses and I'm just, I was just blown away at the approach and the balance that was brought to the conversation to really take this serious and to, you know, I guess they, just to take it serious. And I want to thank the stakeholders and the individuals in this room who've come out, who have met in my office. I know I've met with several of you and I've received hundreds of emails in reference to support us moving forward. I think it's, it's a great, not only a great opportunity, I think it's, it's our responsibility. I feel responsible as a father to my children and their, their children and their children to do the right thing in moving something like this forward, to be better stewards of our environment and to just, it's just the right thing to do. This will assist with the housing crisis in the development community because it will give a more streamlined approach. It'll also give opportunity for the development community to be able to, to add in items that will help offset GHGs and that fall within our cap. And I think this will open up a lot of opportunities from a grant perspective that once this is implemented, we'll be able to approach and apply. I think we actually have applications in the works now that, you know, grants that if this doesn't go through, you know, we're not going to get that money. So this is definitely, this is definitely needed. I want to do something a little interesting. I have a question for the audience, and you can demonstrate by raising your hand. How many of you in this room have solar on your roof? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, only one on your house. Husband and wife can't raise their hand. I have solar, so my wife's raising her hand. All right, so how many was that? I'm counting, sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, cool. How many drove here in an electric vehicle? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, cool. And how many support the 100% renewable energy? Raise your hand. Okay, perfect. That helps me in bringing this to the next set. With that, I heard a lot of passionate voices in reference to 100%, 100%. And we've seen cities like San Diego, we've seen cities like Carlsbad move forward early on to say, hey, we want our goal to be 100%. And what we're seeing because of those preemptive efforts is it's creating some obstacles within their community on burdens with relation to permitting. For example, if you have to, if you want to do a $60,000 or more permit, you are required as a homeowner in Carlsbad, you have to make energy efficient upgrades, which burdens you as a homeowner in making those upgrades. So with goals come consequence, come, you know, financial pressures. I hear a lot of you in here that support the 100%, but not all of you have solar on your roof, offsetting your own personal GHGs. I hear a lot of you 100%, but in your own personal life, you're not driving an electric vehicle. And there's practical reasons why. Maybe you're not a homeowner, you're renting. Maybe it's too expensive. Your financial position doesn't allow for it. But that's your own personal freedom to make that decision. And so being in the position I'm in, to make a decision for the entire city, which will affect policy that will affect a lot of homeowners outside of this room, I don't want to burden them with something that's unrealistic. I want to move forward on this in a healthy way, underestimating and overperforming. Technology is coming, opportunity's coming, and I think as we move forward, if the technology's there and it makes sense, we can adopt new policies. I don't want to be put in a position where we say 100% and now we're like San Diego and Carlsbad and they are scrambling to force through a CCE because they see the burden it's putting on their city by prematurely moving forward on those goals. So I fully support staff's recommendation at the 75%. I wish technology was here, but it's not. And just like some of you wish the technology was there so you could buy your electric vehicle, but it's not. And so I would just like to make the motion to adopt the EDE, ECAE, and the cap, and to certify the FEIR and the adoption of the MMRP, as stated by staff.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. And I think it's really telling that not a single person was here that was against adopting an energy climate action plan and an economic development element. Because this is what we need to address urgently for our citizens to be able to, as staff indicated, reach the highest quality of life. We know what our, what our burdens are, our challenges. We have the lowest jobs-to-residents ratio. 76% travel to a job outside of Oceanside. And only 4%, excuse me, less than 3% of workers regularly commute to work via public transportation. We have a long way to go in Oceanside, but it is so doable. Number one, CCE, we are going to have to do that in order to even comply with the 75% by 2030. We have to. And, and we're not really getting a choice by SDGNE, right? We have to do this. We have been a leader in the region on zero waste. And that is exciting. We have a staff. We have a community that is willing to do what it takes for a brighter future for our kids. And we know that. And it is really, really exciting. I believe that perhaps another question could be, are we each willing by 2030 to say 100% renewable? Not tomorrow. Some folks won't be able to do it by tomorrow, but surely within 11 years, we can do that, each one of us. Everybody would be able to raise their hand. And I think that's what the question is. By 2030, what can we do? It is basically supply and demand. If every city citizen demands that this is what we're going to do, the supply will be there and there will be the technology and there will be the lower costs. But if only some of us are willing to do that, then it's going to look like, oh, it's too costly. Five years ago, I didn't think that we'd finally get here. Right? I mean, when we were talking about climate, climate change, there were still a lot of folks who said, no, that's a conspiracy by scientists, right? But things are happening in the world in terms of our climate, in terms of fires and, and the sea level rise. That makes it very, very clear that we have to act now. When I was a kid here, growing up in Oceanside, I rode my bike everywhere. Of course, Oceanside was only as far as the Mission going out east, but I rode my bike everywhere because it was safe. And I believe that we need to make bike riding safe for everyone, for kids, for seniors. So I think that we need to, as someone indicated, really invest in infrastructure, Class A separated bike paths. That is what other cities are doing to make an impact on their greenhouse gas. And I do believe that idling, we ought to have an idling ordinance. And it's something that would be educational, and I know that once we do the education, people will do it. They'll do it because either their neighbor across the street, or maybe they have, like I have, great nephews that are five and six years old. And I look at them and I think, you know what? We need to leave a future for them that we were able to enjoy here in Oceanside or wherever people were originally from. So I would urge us to adopt the 100% renewable energy by 2030 and to have, to be concerned about how do we do this for everyone, especially those who are at the most economically challenged. So we do need to address that. But saying, no, we can't do it, well, of course, we won't if we, if we don't even try. But if we, if we actually say, this is what we're going to do, we as a community are going to figure this out and how we're going to be able to have every family, every unit be able to afford this. And again, by having everybody say, this is what we want to do in Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, everywhere, then it is something that we will do. The cost will go down, the, the technology will be there because there will be a demand for it. So I would really like to urge the maker in the second to change their minds and say, you know what, we can do this. We've got 11 years. We can start immediately. We've already gotten pretty far in terms of, in terms of zero waste. We're so darn lucky that we had the foresight to have what we have at El Corazon in terms of green waste. And we're so fortunate to have a community that once they got the 45 meetings, you know, by staff to talk about something like single-use plastic bag, that before the meeting, oh, not too happy about it. After the meeting, you know what, I want to make a difference. And you know, the folks that really get this are the kids. Every time I listen to a kid talk about saving the planet and water conservation and zero waste, I mean, these kids are talking zero waste and idling. I, I just, you know, like, okay, it's us that have to really change it all. We have to be, we should be listening to the kids because they get it. And they're the ones that are most impacted by unfortunately, the quality of the air, the quality of the built environment. So I think that what the, what the, our planning commissioners did, and it was unanimous vote, to say, we can get there. We can do this by 2030. We can do this. We need to have a committee to address what, what else we can do to, to make sure that we meet those goals. And that we say out loud, we're going to address whatever concerns, whatever impacts there are to our communities that are most economically challenged, to be able to do this. Because their kids go to school with every other kid, they want this too. So it's really up to us to make it happen. The five of us here, excuse me, four of us, we've got Peter's not here, on the dais to say, yes, we can do this. We've got a staff that through, through the studies have said, this is, this is feasible. This is feasible. And the thing is that if we do have problems, we can always address those problems. But if we don't put it out there, if we don't say, we can do this and let's do it and let's do this together, then we'll never know. And I think we're, we're, you know, already saying, we're a C student, we're not an A student. Let me tell you, when I was growing up, I used to be, oh, my first language was Spanish. So I don't remember kindergarten very well, but I remember that after, after kindergarten, after that, I was Miss Chatty Cathy. I mean, I was always talking and, and because I learned the, the English language. And so I was teacher's pet, a lot of times. But for, when we went to camp in fifth grade, the folks out there didn't know me and they looked at my, looked at me and saw that I was a person of a different color and they told me, especially this one person, I know you're a troublemaker. I know I'm going to have to watch you. And I had never been treated like that before. I lived in a very diverse community, east side, military families, mothers from all over the world. And I'll just, I'll wrap this up. I promise. I will. I will. And you know what? I did, I did cause a problem. Why? Because I was being treated as a person that was going to cause a problem. And even though I was just a kid, I afterwards thought, oh my God, why did I do that? So we need to, and by the way, the teacher afterwards, or not teacher, the camp person afterwards apologized to me for having said that. Because she realized I was, you know, from a good family and a good kid. But we need to treat everyone as if, yes, we can do this. And yes, we all deserve it, whether we live from one side of the, you know, in east side or in, you know, a really wonderful place like Morro Hills or Jeffries Ranch. We all deserve this for our kids because our kids deserve this. So I urge my colleagues to please, please, please consider changing that to 2030, adding an ordinance for idling. And also, let's invest in infrastructure for separated bike paths. It is time that we do this. It is time that we get back in our bicycles, kids, seniors, all of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Kime.
First, I want to thank everyone who took time to meet with me. I think I've met with most everyone in the room. I've got some of the most technical and informative emails I've ever received. I think Mr. Bolick's emails on parking. I'm still trying to digest all that information. But to have all the expertise and the passion, it's very, it's very welcome and I appreciate it. I had a quick question for staff, Mr. Cunningham. Why did staff recommend 75% initially as opposed to 100%?
Councilmember Kime. Councilmember Kime, we started this process some time ago and the modeling that was conducted to determine what sort of emissions reduction we could achieve from the measures that we vowed... that we've outlined in the cap was a complex process. It takes some time. And at that time, we're going back nearly a couple of years now, we didn't have the information that we have today. We didn't have a feasibility assessment. There was not as much dialogue on the subject of CCE and how people would achieve the kinds of renewable energy procurement that other cities have committed to. So it's been an evolution. I think if we had started this process maybe a bit later, perhaps after San Diego had made its commitment, after some of these other cities had made their commitments, if we'd had access to the feasibility studies at the time, we might have gone another route with our recommendation. But I will say this, that the cap, as it's currently constituted, is not serving as mitigation in the sequoia sense of that term for this project because the economic development element, the energy and climate action element, are not growth-inducing documents, and we did not find that there are any GHG emissions impacts associated with this project. So technically, the cap can be just an aspirational document at this point. It will be something different when we open up the land use element and the circulation element and the city's other existing elements for updating. We will probably inevitably see that there are emissions impacts associated with new policies in those documents, and we will then have to demonstrate a certain level of emissions reduction as part of that, and we may need to revisit the goal that we established tonight.
Okay. So it's fair to say we can, we can go after 100%? If, 100%, if we're going to do that, it's going to be, we're going to need to do it through a CCE, right?
Well, at this point, I suppose there's no telling what might evolve over the next 11 years, but at this point, CCE is the only means that we are aware of by which the city could achieve anything close to 75% or 100% renewable energy.
Yeah, I think we unanimously decided to go forward with the CCE, or for exploring the CCE. So do you think as, as we went forward in that process, more, we'd have a better understanding if we get to 100% when we start to determine what kind of CCE we're going to form and as we get more concrete information regarding to that? Do you think that'd be a better time to, to see if 100% is possible?
What I can say is that this cap is a living document in that it will evolve. We will inevitably have to revisit the document as part of the next phase of the general plan update, and that will happen really sooner rather than later, within the next couple of years. So that would provide an opportunity to reassess any number of measures.
I think 100% would be an ultimate goal, and I would love to hear from constituents as we move forward in this process and your recommendations. Right now, I'd be happy to support the 75% and with the goal of eventually hoping to move forward with that.
Did you cancel? Thank you. I thought I was going to have to give you 10 more minutes. I did notice in the newspaper this week, the ocean is cooling two to four degrees, so we're, we're almost safe. We didn't look at waste to energy. I heard no nuclear, but waste to energy would have sure been a boon to the whole county at, at one point about 30 years ago when they built the plant. I had, let's see. I thought Larry Balma was going to stand up and offer all that property out there for wind farms, but, but I didn't get, I didn't see that come out of him. Under fiscal impact, it says there is no direct fiscal impact associated with the adoption of the EDE, ECAE, and cap at this time. I would, I would say we need to watch that closely because I think we're going to end up with spending a lot of money for lots of different things. Maybe it's going to save money as we go forward, but in some aspects, I think it's ultimately going to cost more money. And I did the same thing Christopher did at Sandag last week, or actually Mayor Sotella Solis from National City asked how many people in a packed room rode transit in the last month, and there were probably eight hands in a packed room. So 3% of the people that are trying to build more transit, you know, we, we definitely have a challenge in, in making that work, so. And I also wanted to say that what if my crown Victoria lasts 12 years more? You know, do I, does that mean I'm forced out of it to a little tiny car like yours? Russ, I'm sorry. You know, I'm, I see it as a tool for us for economic development, and that's why I'm supporting it. Thank you. So I see no more questions.
Motion approved, 4-0.
So we have one item we haven't covered yet, but I am definitely going to take a five-minute break. Please.